Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, August 10, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please, Denise.
Councilmember Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Kylie.
Here.
Knightzert.
Here.
All right. As is tradition at our meetings, we start with an invocation, and we're honored to have Jeff Schvennis with us here tonight with Direct Line Prayer Center. So I ask that you stand for Jeff's invocation, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for this opportunity. It's a pleasure. I've loved Sioux Falls for my entire life. Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and this evening, and we thank you for this opportunity to be at this meeting tonight. And we thank you for the great city of Sioux Falls, its people, its abundant opportunities. And we also thank you for the mayor and each council member and the exciting staff that the city employees. Lord, we also pray that you would bless and protect our leaders and their families, the residents of Sioux Falls and the surrounding area. That you also protect our houses of worship, our businesses, and please bless our hospitals and staff and patients. We also ask that you'd bless and protect our firemen and women and our law enforcement. And, Lord, we're about to have a new school year start. We pray that you would protect our schools and universities that would be a successful and good and productive school year. And, Lord, now that there's the business at hand tonight, we ask that you'd provide our leaders with great thought, great discussion, and unity and purpose as they lead this great city of Sioux Falls, a city that shines bright, provides opportunity, and hope to the entire region, state, and beyond. Again, thank you for our leaders and this city in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to ask Council Selberg and Katie Barnes to join me up front.
Well, good evening, everyone. On occasion, as some of you may know, the city council recognizes some citizens that go above and beyond in the community with our citizen recognition program and the superhero program. So that's what we are going to do tonight to start out the program. Are you ready? All right, let's give it a go. Well, there is a rare breed of person out there today, one who looks to what they can do for others before they worry about themselves. Katie Barnes is one of these people, a lady with an amazingly optimistic attitude. She's always thinking positively. She has a laugh, smile, and sense of humor that lights up any room she's in, and she has the gift of hospitality. She loves to host, be it events for organizations that she's involved with or entertaining friends and family in her beautiful home. Katie has done countless hours of community work for our city over the years and has been particularly involved in the Sioux Falls tennis programs in helping to shape kids through the avenues the game provides. She's on the steering committee for the South Dakota Tennis Hall of Fame and has been a powerful force in the O'Gorman tennis program, assisting her husband Don to five state championships for the Knights over the years. Hasn't it been more than that? Seems like 20. Quite a few more. Yeah, I think we got that number. It's up.
Seventeen.
There we go. Thank you, Don. And she is especially popular with her players and even their parents, which, as we know, isn't easy in the high school sports world. Here's what one of the tennis parents had to say about Katie. Kate is a dynamo and routinely brings her infectious positive energy to community efforts through her volunteerism. She is one of the best coaches and mentors I've ever seen with how she motivates and inspires young people to be the absolute best they can be. Simply put, Kate Barnes is one of a kind, and she is without a doubt a superhero to many. In addition to being a leader, coach, and inspiration, first and foremost, Katie is a great friend. If you need her, she'll be there five seconds flat, no questions asked. I personally know this firsthand, and if you are lucky enough to have her in your corner, you just have this confidence, everything's going to be fine. So Sioux Falls needs more Kates, and knowing her, she'll be out there first thing tomorrow trying to find them. She'll be inspiring and coaching those who follow her to be one. So congratulations, Katie. Proud of you, kid. One other quick thing while I got you up here. Katie is kind of the queen of the little gifts and trinkets for whatever the occasion is. The other day, I think somebody in our group was 55, so they gotten up double nickels. So the other day, I had to do some hunting, Katie, but I found a couple of cadberries that yeast her, because you're a good egg. You have to. You do have to share them. You can say something.
Thank you very much. I'm extremely honored. And I grew up in a small-town Woonsocket, and I just feel so privileged to live in the state of South Dakota. My entire marriage of 49 years to the same husband, it makes it easier, you know. I hate to train another one. But anyway, what I'd like to say is we spent most of all of the 49 years in this beautiful city of Sioux Falls in the state of South Dakota, and I couldn't be more proud. And I want to also ask all of you to give a round of applause to our amazing mayor and all of these leaders who keep our city so safe. They keep it clean, and they keep it a place where everyone wants to live. I don't know if you've noticed, but everybody's moving here. So anyway, thank you very much. I'm honored, and yes, I love to host the parties in my backyard as soon as this meeting is over.
Oh, that's fun. Kate, there's also a cash prize if you stay to the end of the meeting tonight. Goes with that, so. You can leave at any time if you'd like. Yes, thank you. Congratulations. You're a neat lady. We will move on then with item five. It's our consent agenda. Any changes to be made?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr.
Yes, I'd like to pull from item seven, or sub, item seven, sub item number two, a contract for the Health Department with Augustana University.
All right, we'll pull that. Any other changes to be made to the consent? All right, hearing none. Just need a motion, please, to approve this.
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen, to approve the consent agenda. Then any discussion there? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg. Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move on to item 10. That's the approval of our regular agenda. Look for a motion there, please.
Move to approve, Sale. Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen, to approve our regular agenda. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero as well. Before we continue on, just want to review public input for tonight. For our regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all of our regular agenda items tonight, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration at that time only. And during general public input, comments will be no more than three minutes per person. So with that being said, we'll move on to the pulled item, item seven, sub item two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, if someone from the Health Department, Dr. Chima, wants to just explain what the contract is and what we're trying to accomplish, that probably will cover most of the questions.
Good evening, Charles.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, the council. I thank you, Counselor Starr, for bringing up this item for discussion. So this is a contract to colleagues at Augustana University, specifically the Augustana Research Institute, to work with the Health Department to conduct some focus groups and do some community surveys to help us identify some of the persisting barriers to, you know, why our vaccination rates have stalled. If you look at the numbers in the last one month, you see that essentially we've kind of gotten to around 52% and kind of just stayed there. So what can we do to get our vaccination rates up from where it is to more like 70 or 80, which is where we need to be to be safe, to kind of avoid having a surge in infections in the fall? So if you look at the barriers, it's either going to be access or demand-side barriers. We know that access will resolve most of that, so we no longer have to make appointments to get a vaccine. Most of the big pharmacies, you're just walking, the same with the health systems, you walk into any clinic to get a vaccine. But the demand is not just what we expect. So there's essentially to listen, to speak with the community, and to understand what are some of those persistent reasons why people are not getting the vaccine, and then to see how we can work with the community to address those barriers so that we can get more people vaccinated.
If I can, Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Starr.
Thank you. What kind of timing are we looking at? I mean, going into the field, developing the questions, I mean, how far along are we in the process? How soon? I guess what we're seeing around the country is very concerning, and it's similar to what we did in Sioux Falls last year. You know, we felt really confident last summer it wasn't going to be us. We were watching other states, you know, shut down their emergency rooms because they don't have staff and the variant's spreading. We're not going to be that long before we're into that part of it.
You're right. You're right. Now, we are now waiting, we're not just sitting down waiting for the results of those studies in order to take action. So in the past few weeks, we've been meeting with partners, you know, with Avaris and Fort Lewis Pharmacy, the big pharmacies, and looking at what we can do. So first of all, we look at the data, kind of see who is vaccinated, who is not, and we really have a better understanding of knowing some of the zip codes and, you know, census tracts that have much less vaccination rates than the others. So we're already in the field, have people doing outreaches, but what this will help is kind of give us a bit more precision so that we're not making guesses as where do we need to focus. You know, Sioux Falls is a big, kind of relatively big city, so we have limited resources to have a better use of those resources. You really need to know which is the demographics that have low vaccination rates, and you need to know why they're not getting vaccinated so that you can target both your messaging and your outreach teams to kind of focus where the greatest need is. So we are already in the field, you know, working with partners to increase vaccination rate. This will just give us more precise information to maximize our resources.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Chima while we got him here? Counselor Knightzert?
Is that money coming from existing funding that we have, or is there grant funding?
Yeah, that's a good, it's coming from the ARPA funds, so this is not coming from city funding. This is, you know, this is exactly what ARPA funding was designed to do, which is to provide those resources to scale up both outreach as well as, you know, anything related to COVID response in the next two years. So it's coming from ARPA.
Okay, great. And then, if I could. Go ahead. The other question would be, is, well, if I can think of it. Is there, I'm blanking on my question. Visibility, that's what I was thinking of. Visibility as it relates to, does the city have visibility in, maybe not who, but at least even statistical data of how many are vaccinated in the city, what age demographics aren't vaccinated versus are, like how many 60- to 69-year-olds are vaccinated? Do we have that data, or is that held at the state only?
Yes, so the state is the one that collects the data, but we've been working with the State Department of Health, so the state has been very gracious and working with us to provide, you know, access to that data so that we can have the information we need to make our decisions. So our civic analytics team, over the past two weeks, have been digging into the data and kind of drawing insights from that data that the state has shared with us.
Would we be looking at a second phase of some sort of outreach or some sort of action plan or whatever it may be to get shots in arms?
Yes, so for, I'll give an example. So, you know, we've had those billboards that have kind of been up in the city, you know, talking about the vaccines and why people need to get vaccinated. So part of what we're doing is to say, we know that the older age groups are much more vaccinated than the younger age groups. So we are changing some of our strategies to really figure out how to target, you know, the adolescents and the young adults who have the least vaccination rates at this point, and kind of where we need to focus on, essentially those under 50 for the most part. But of course, there still remains people above 50 who need to be vaccinated.
Okay. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, Dr. Chima. Any other questions for Dr. Chima? All right, look for a motion to approve this item, then.
So move, Jensen.
Okay, motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Sale to approve this item. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yep.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Move to item 11, please.
Second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving a grant of easement for sanitary sewer. Private applicant, Smithfield Package Meets Corp.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Andy.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Andy Berg, Public Works. Tonight's the second reading on granting of a sanitary sewer easement to Smithfield. It is through the city-owned property, the levee system right below the spillway. The easement is for relocation of their outfall pipe to discharge their wastewater treatment plant discharged into the river. Previously, it was just to the west side of the screen there, the left side, and that is being moved around to that north side.
All right, thanks, Andy. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, do you have any questions for Andy here? Look for a motion to approve item 11.
Move approval.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve this. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
That one passes eight to zero. Item 12.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 39, personnel regulations and benefits, retirements and pensions. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 17, 2021. Sponsor, Mayor.
Good evening. Come on up, Angie.
Good evening, Angie Youthy with Human Resources. This ordinance would modify the ordinance language respective to holidays for city employees by adding the Juneteenth holiday to our recognized holidays for city employees. It would be effective in 2022.
Thank you, Angie.
Yep.
All right, anyone from the public would like to speak to this item tonight? Counsel, do you have any questions on this item tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr.
Sure, and I don't know if it's Angie or someone else could explain what the Juneteenth holiday is? Perfect, thank you.
Excuse me, again, Angie Youthy with Human Resources. The Juneteenth holiday actually is, according to Southern folklore, respective to the date when the enslaved people of Texas first learned of their freedom. So technically, they were freed in 1863, but they did not learn of their freedom until the arrival of the Union soldiers on June 19, 1865, well after the end of the Civil War, and two and a half years after the proclamation was first issued. So it's a holiday that the federal government has already granted very last minute, so we obviously could not observe it in 2021, and it actually is the first federal holiday enacted in almost four decades.
Thanks, Angie. Other questions for Angie? All right, hearing no other questions. Look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 17 on this.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. To that effect, any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 13 is the first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 51, utility rates and charges pertaining to water customers outside the city of Sioux Falls. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 17, 2021. Sponsor, Mayor.
Hey, Andy.
Hi, Andy Berg, Public Works. This is a quick summary is there are properties along 57th Street between Veterans Parkway and Six Mile Road and along Six Mile that are within a project area for our upcoming 57th Street project. As part of that project, the water main replacement has to take place for Lincoln County Rural Water. In discussions with them, it was deemed best for both parties that the city install water main down 57th Street and not have the duplicate water main for Lincoln County Rural Water there. So this is basically a buyout of those five customers and adding them to our ordinance list of properties that receive in-city rates for being an out-of-city customer at this time.
All right, thanks, Andy.
And this is the location if anybody needs that.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, got any questions on this one? Look for a motion. That would be to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 17.
So moved, Kylie.
Second, Knightzert.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Knightzert. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yep.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 14.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations. Park and recreation, $800,000. General fund transfers to sales tax, sales use tax fund, $3,012,500. Fire rescue, $2.5 million. Parks and recreation, $512,500. General fund transfer to housing fund, $3 million. Housing, $500,000. General fund transfer to centralized facilities fund, $2 million. Sales use tax fund transfers to centralized facilities fund, $900,000. Highways and streets, $1.25 million. Entertainment venues, Washington Pavilion, $4.6 million and $1.4 million. Health, $100,000. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 17, 2021. Sponsor, Mayor.
Thanks, Denise. Good evening, Sean.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sean Pritchard, Director of Finance. The item before you tonight is a supplemental appropriation for various one-time appropriations for projects affiliated with the Sioux Falls For All initiative. I am going to speak in broad terms because the supplemental tonight is the first step and several steps that would occur, and want to talk about the entirety of the plan for the council, as well as for the benefit of the entire community in terms of how these funds will be deployed. In essence, this is a roadmap. It is a strategic plan for designating these one-time funds that are available to make some transformative long-term investments for the benefit of our community and certainly for our residents. Sioux Falls For All is more than just a mantra or a brand. It is really, it's really a way of doing business as a community, and I think that this plan showcases the capacity of the council and the administration to work collectively, as well as to identify priorities, but to work with our private and nonprofit sectors as well, to really make some important investments in our community that will have long-term returns for our community overall. A bulk of these funds were received as one-time funds from the federal government. They were in response to the pandemic, as well as how we look forward coming out of the pandemic. And so as we look at how we deploy these funds, we certainly have kept that in mind in the way that these priorities would be set. And kind of taking a look back, so this is somewhat the second phase of the deployment of one-time funds. If you recall, in the past year, some of the areas in which we actually appropriated funds and utilized some of these one-time funds related to the prepayment of bonds for $25 million, as well as investments, as council approved, in quality of life enhancements to this community, including the construction of Jacobson Plaza, an African, a zoo African exhibit expansion at Great Plains Zoo, a River Greenway design, a investment in arterial streets to advance the growth of our local economy, as well as an investment of $500,000 in the Operation Hope Fund, recognizing some of the impacts of the pandemic, having for both mental and mental health and substance abuse and helping people have access to those services here in the community. As we look at our next investment, which is actually larger than our first set of investments that were made over the course of the last year, there were several areas we looked at in terms of prioritization. First and foremost, it was a collaborative process, working with the council and the administration to identify those priorities that were important to move forward. We did have to consider the impacts of COVID and where we're at as a community relative to the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic, and some of the direct and some of the indirect side effects that resulted as part of that. And we are unique and different than any other community in the nation, and we're unique within our own state as well. And so how we address or deploy these funds really needs to be reflective of what our experience has been. We also have to be cognizant of the ARPA program guidance and what it provides for guidelines and details of how we might utilize these funds. And the U.S. Department of Treasury has issued hundreds of pages of guidance and FAQs that we've utilized to help determine how we would develop this roadmap, working with you. Scaling for growth and assessing current community needs is very important. Again, because we're in a unique place as a community, we are growing very rapidly, particularly seeing that over the last year, but also assessing what our needs are and how these funds would have the most impactful investment for us. And then finally, with the council, you had a work session, a series of informations on projects that you had identified and had established your kind of own priority setting in passing a resolution in terms of your budget priorities, which we will also discuss and reflect upon tonight. Just to go through the availability of funds to kind of walk through that, so we were going to talk a lot about the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, but that represents about half of the funds that are part of this plan. So that is about $25 million in total. We received half of those funds this year in July. We will receive the other half no less than one year from when we received the first half of the funds. So that would be in July or August of next year when we draw down those funds. We also had one-time funds that were remaining from last year that were carried forward into this year as part of the general fund for about $10.8 million. This plan also calls for a strategic drawdown of about $2 million from our reserve funds for an investment in city assets. We had $7.9 million that we carried forward in the sales and use tax fund that were not obligated, that were due to an increase in certain expectations for sales taxes from last year and freed up funds as a result of prepaying debt. We had about $2.5 million in this year's capital program that is a result of that prepayment of debt that occurred last year. We were expecting to make that payment of that debt service when we budgeted last year, and we don't have to make that payment this year, so that is freed up funds that can be allocated for other purposes. And then we have $1.4 million that is allocated or was available in the capital program for 2023, but wasn't specifically designated, but was included as part of community and regional parks. That was a result of some adjustments to our expectation for sales taxes when we were building out the capital program. Those sales tax returns have increased significantly here over the last several months, and we were adjusting our expectations accordingly. And then finally, we have some grant funds that we're allocating, as well as some applications pending that I will talk about with the Economic Development Administration. First of all, just to do a refresher on some of the priorities, as I said, there's about 200 pages of guidance on the American Rescue Act, and it can cover any number of areas. As I've said to you, kind of as part of our monthly financial presentation, it is both broad in scope and very narrow in scope all at the same time, if that's a realistic thing to be. But the areas in which we look at our priorities and what we are really focused on in terms of the American Rescue Plan are a number of areas. First is provision of governmental services to the extent of reduction in revenue, which is essentially saying, if we could prove that we had revenue loss over the course of 2020 and the years that follow, then we can utilize the funds a little bit more flexible than we might otherwise. So otherwise, there was a great deal of limitations as to specifically what we could do. And by saying that, we could essentially take those funds, and if we could prove revenue loss, we could say we could utilize them for the provision of general government services. And we had gone through the iterations of that, and it took us multiple weeks to kind of settle on a number, but we've settled on $17.2 million of revenue loss for 2020 based on the guidance that's been provided to us. The other areas that ARPA really addresses is COVID and disaster response mitigation. If you recall, we talked a little bit about how the CARES Act really was reactionary to the time period of the pandemic. ARPA is really a lot more forward-thinking in terms of trying to address some of the direct direct and indirect impacts that were a result of the pandemic. The two other areas that it really has a lot of focus on is economic recovery and it speaks in large part to high-impact industries and specifically it calls out tourism and hospitality as, as high-impact industries, which is certainly the case of what we experienced here in Sioux Falls. It also talks, it, it makes assumptions that certain populations, primarily those that are underserved or disproportionately impacted populations as it refers to it, were more impacted by the pandemic than other populations in terms of its impact on education attainment, access to basic and behavioral healthcare services, promotion of wellness and outdoor recreation, housing and violence prevention. And so that is a key initiative, a key portion of the American Rescue Act that we are focused on and some of the initiatives that are being brought forward. And then finally, the four, one of the four pillars of this act was the availability of utilizing these funds for water and wastewater projects. And so that is one area that we'll be discussing tonight as well. In terms of the investment strategy that we've used, we've talked early on about trying to focus on one-time funding matched with one-time projects. You'll see in, in some of the allocation of funds tonight that they would occur over several years and they would be utilized for programmatic purposes in terms of assisting in some programming that is related to responding to the pandemic. And with our discussion in the partners that the council has brought forward with and that we've worked with here over the last several months, we have had those discussions in terms of knowing that this is very limited funding and it is not a source of ongoing support for program purposes, but it is meant to bridge a gap and fill it, and fill that gap during a more brief time period. We, we also are looking to maximize the use of funds and the project timeline. So it's very important to us to look at what all these projects were, what their expectations and when their necessary resources would be needed to be utilized for these projects. We wanted to have a broad-based recovery and response plan. If it was too narrow for ARPA, it, it wouldn't be reflective of the spirit of which that act was passed. And so we wanted to have a broad-based vision for responding with, with some of the funds that we're utilizing through ARPA. So it's not just so narrowly that we're just going to do water and wastewater projects or we're going to fit, fix one piece at the Washington Pavilion, but really wanted to take a broad look at the entirety of the act and, and the plan itself. We wanted to minimize the administrative burden that we might put on third parties. We recognize any city funds that would be utilized by a third party for construction would entail public bidding requirements that go along with it, which can be challenging and may increase cost for certain projects depending on the project. And also there's an administrative burden anytime we're utilizing federal funds and there are certain compliance requirements that go along with that. Most importantly, we're, we're looking to maximize community impact. And so each of the projects that are being brought forward are, are falling under four separate areas, the first of which is supporting children, families and neighborhoods. The second one is investing in infrastructure and public space. The third one, investing in jobs and economic opportunity. And finally, the last one, enhancing governmental response and resilience. Under that first category of supporting children, families and neighborhoods, I'll walk through each of these projects. You'll note that a few of them are starred and I put those in specifically to identify the, the areas that were identified in the, in the council resolution as high priority items. So we certainly recognize that there, there are certain things in here that were also priorities for the council that may, that weren't included in that resolution and we know that based on our personal conversations with you, but we just wanted to specifically highlight those areas that had been identified in that resolution. The first one deals with youth and community violence and intervention. This would include an $800,000 allocation that would be used primarily for dealing with some of the challenges that we have with, with youth and community violence. And this would work and play with several partners with the city who help partner with the city to address some of these issues. Some of them have had some funding challenges that have to deal with some mechanical issues with federal funding. And so this would be available over the course of the next three years and would be derived from the American Rescue Act funding. The second item relates to the YMCA Community Youth Center and this is to help support them with programming. They have been partnering with the Boys and Girls Club. They have been retooling as a youth center here with the YMCA building and doing some very creative and innovative things with that. And this would help support them as they fill that need and that gap for youth in our community and checks a lot of boxes relative to those disproportionately impacted populations. And then lastly, the Arboretum support would be 150,000, would be spread over three years, 50,000 each. And this would be specific to helping the Arboretum with outreach to disproportionately impacted primarily youth and giving them the opportunity to take advantage of this great resource that we have in our community. It goes a little bit back to Counselor Starr, your, your comment here earlier in the budget presentation, talking about the zoo and making sure people have opportunities that might not have, otherwise have the resources. So this would give them the potential to reach out to Title I schools, to youth centers and things of that nature, to be able to transport students to be a part of them as well as to assist them with the cost of programming those items. The second item deals specifically with accessible housing and there are three areas here. The first one, which is funded by ARPA, would be for $3 million and would be programmed into the, motioned into the 2022 budget. This would be specific for looking at strategic acquisition of land in redevelopment areas that is, where there's an opportunity for making improvements to those neighborhoods as well as to be utilized for housing redevelopment or outdoor recreation redevelopment in those areas. The second area was a council-initiated priority and it is, delves into having public safety officers be provide, be provided with down payment assistance to incentivize them to have the ability to buy homes in core redevelopment areas, knowing that when we have the capacity of these public safety officers to live in these neighborhoods, that we create safer neighborhoods and, and help with the overall neighborhood development there. And then lastly, is a $2.5 million investment, which would come from the general fund, which would provide more flexible funding to invest in innovative housing development, affordable housing opportunities in our community. And we know that housing has certainly been top of mind, particularly in the last year relative to having that availability for people that are coming into our community. The second set of investments relate to investing in infrastructure and public space. They include a $5 million allocation to rebuild and reconstruct the Big Sioux River Low Head Dam. This has been something that we have had incorporated with the River Greenway Project, which we've segmented off for purposes of making a grant application, but we would utilize ARPA funds from next year to help support this project. This, this, the condition of the low head dam is deteriorating, which is why it has been programmed in and contemplated for replacement. It accumulates trash, but it's also a vital piece of infrastructure that keeps our river at higher levels through downtown. The second one would be a $1.25 million allocation for this year. This would be for reconstruction of the streetscape and the cul-de-sac at 7th Street to provide a gateway and, and better pedestrian access to the Ark of Dreams. The third item is something we're seeing a lot coming out of the pandemic is escalating project costs and construction costs. It's not just something that the city is experiencing, but certainly the private market as well. We, as we gear up to bid a large portion of the wastewater treatment expansion project, we recognize that there will likely be cost escalation as a result of some of the things that we're seeing in the market right now. So we have allocated $6.8 million in this year's American Rescue Act allocation to support some of those cost escalations that we're expecting. And then lastly, also from this year's allocation of the American Rescue Act, we would put $4.6 million into replacement of the cornice as, as well as potential replacement of the parapet at the Washington Pavilion. We've talked about this in great detail in the past. We hope to have this designed by the end of this year and bid by the end of this year so we'll have an opportunity to talk with you as a council. We would absorb about $1.4 million of that cost within the entertainment tax. Initially, we had anticipated the entertainment tax would pay for the entirety of that project, but due to reductions of income during the pandemic as well as just other impacts that have, that occurred, it's not able to support the full cost of that. The next set of projects fall under investing in infrastructure and public place. This is really another opportunity that we have to really make meaningful investments in quality and life enhancements in our community. And many of these were brought forward by council members as high priorities that we should address as we come into how we put our plan together. The first is a $300,000 investment into the East Sioux Falls History Plaza. This would be at the, the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum. The second would be an $800,000 allocation in the 2023 capital program to support and leverage the capital, in the capital appeals campaign that is going to be coming forward for the skateboard park at Nelson Park. So an opportunity to make a significant investment for youth in our community. The third is a $9.5 million investment into the River Greenway Phase Three, as I alluded to here just a few minutes ago. $7 million of that would be supplemented this evening and we would be using our, our excess sales and use tax funds. And then we do anticipate applying for a $2.5 million grant through the Economic Development Administration to support the rest of that project. The Dakota Aquarium and Butterfly House would receive an $800,000 allocation to help support the construction and expansion of their facility, which has really, had really significant impact on our tourism sector, especially as they've expanded their aquariums and so forth, which have been very popular for both residents but people who are visiting our community. The funding would help support the, the expansion of that facility and might include equipment or so forth that, that would be needed as part of that project. And then lastly, a $512,500 investment into the Tomar Tennis Courts. That's an expansion of having 12 tennis courts and having a premier facility at Tomar Park. So the city would participate in that project by taking a portion of that project and building it in conjunction with the funds that have been, that have been raised as part of that project. We have set aside $4 million with the anticipation of using those funds for workforce and economic diversification. These would not yet be appropriated. They would be appropriated at the time that a defined project is brought forward or defined projects would be brought forward. But specifically, the intent of these funds and, and the council spoke to this is we, we have a need to make sure that we are investing in high-quality employment, high-quality jobs in our community. And that might be in healthcare or it might be in biosciences or it might be in cybersecurity, but we have a capacity and a role as a city to partner with our economic development partners and with our educational institutions to help support those efforts. And so this funding would be set aside for that specific purpose. On the enhancing government response and resilience, the first section deals with safety and health and there's, there's a number of key initiatives that are involved in this. The first is the Community Health Worker Initiative and this is $100,000. It would be funded by a state grant that the community health has received. And this is really about a recognition and about what public health means and that it's not enough to just provide public health services if people don't understand how to access those services. And so this would, this would retool one existing position and add one position. And this would involve accreditation and then a support from the state in, to utilizing community health workers that would go out and outreach to underserved populations and help them with navigating our healthcare systems. The second was, is for behavioral health and disaster response and this would be a $700,000 allocation specifically through the budget process for over 2022 through 2024. And the areas that this would focus on is investing in 24, access to 24/7 behavioral health services and working with our partners with Avera as well as the Helpline Center. The Helpline Center has been a great partner with the city in terms of disaster mitigation, but also in, in providing access to referrals and care. And so this, that is the intent of that section. And then lastly, the public safety training facility construction. Similar to the water reclamation facility, we expect cost escalations to occur for this project. We do plan to bid this project later this fall. So this would provide an allocation of $2.5 million this year and an allocation of $2.5 million next year to help support and keep that project on task, on track and making sure that we're still, we're getting the same amenities that we originally anticipated when this project was brought forward for initial council approval. And then the last set of investments are, again, focused on enhancing government response and resilience around foundational growth. The first is a one-time drawdown of $2 million, which would be seeding of the centralized facilities fund that this council helped create through the budget process last year. So this would be in a reinvestment into our existing facilities. Areas of those investments that are contemplated would be the rehabilitation of the highways and streets building, the rehabilitation of buildings at the parks campus, as well as the Ronning Library and several other projects that we basically, we have on our radar screen to, to continue moving forward. The second one is a $900,000 investment to replace the, the chiller at the law enforcement center, which we have concerns about its longevity as well as the time period it's going to take to order that particular item. So that is an item moved up from next year to this year. And then finally, we propose taking the money that was saved as a result of prepaying debt for this one year and put it into the sales and use tax reserve. We have a very small reserve when it comes to the sales and use tax. We increased it last year. That, that reserve proved vital during the pandemic to ensure that we were not deobligating existing projects that we couldn't move forward with and having those opportunities. So this would designate those funds to add to that reserve balance. The next steps, first tonight is the first reading of the supplement that we have listed out here and I'm going to walk through that. The, the second step would be next week would be second reading as well as approval of a capital program resolution or amendment. Third step would be to request a motion to amend the 2022 budget with several items that would be part of that 2022 budget as well as the 2022 through 2026 capital program. Those would be set to occur on September 14th with adoption of the capital program and budget. After that time period, we would go through a period of gift, drafting, gifting and sub-grant recipient agreements with third parties that would be receiving funding through this plan. Then we would incorporate certain components into the 23 and 24 budgets and then we will have compliance and tracking until probably 2045 at this point. I'm not sure. But as far as this supplement, so I, I do want to walk you through this supplement. It is a probably the more, most complex supplement the city has ever done in terms of the amount of funding that's being allocated, even though it's just a portion of it at this time. So to walk you through that, the first item that's on there is the general fund. This is a allocation and appropriation to parks to utilize to support the Dakota Aquarium and Butterfly House in the amount of $800,000. It includes a general fund transfer to the sales and use tax fund of $3 million. So this is double appropriated because it goes from the general fund to the sales tax fund and then it will be appropriated out of the sales and use tax fund. So that would be $2.5 million to support the public safety training facility, $512,500 to support the Tomar Tennis Courts and Parks improvements. There would be a transfer from the general fund to the housing fund of $3 million, of which $500,000 would be appropriated a second time out of the housing fund to be utilized for the public safety personal home down payment assistance program. And then the other $2.5 million, which is set aside for housing fund investments would be, would just sit in the housing fund until that initiative moves forward and, and the plan is articulated to the council as to how those funds, funds would be utilized. There would be a general fund transfer to centralized facilities of $2 million to make that investment in the centralized facilities fund, a $900,000 transfer from the sales and use tax to the centralized facilities fund for replacing the law enforcement center chiller. There would be a $1.25 million appropriation from the sales and use tax fund for the 7th Street cul-de-sac reconstruction and streetscaping project. There would be an appropriation from the Washington, from the entertainment tax for a total of $6 million, of which 4.6 million would come from the American Recovery Rescue Plan Act for the Washington Pavilion cornice replacement. There would be a $100,000 appropriation from the health department based on the state grant. And lastly, in a separate ordinance, a, an appropriation of $7 million to fund the construction of the River Greenway Phase Three improvements, which is being taken up separately for purpose of, of making a grant application to the Economic Development Administration. With that, I would promise the presentation will not be that long next week and I'm happy to entertain any questions you have.
All right. Thank you Sean. Anybody from the public like to speak on item 14 tonight? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Sean on any of the items presented on this first reading here? Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
Youth and community violence intervention, 2022 through 2024. Do you have a breakdown of what third parties will receive funding?
We do not have a specific breakdown at this time. So in formulating this, the intent was, one of the areas that was brought forward from the council was called a freedom in some of the work that they are doing. We also had outreach from the Compass Center with some of the challenges that they're having in terms of federal funding availability, especially in the near term, at a, at a similar time of when they're actually seeing an increase in their services and not having the capacity to meet all the demands for their services. So those are the two that were specifically identified. This might also include some initiatives that the city may move forward in terms of youth and community violence intervention projects. So the allocation hasn't been determined yet. The intent is to sit down with them hopefully before we get to September 14th and have a better idea based on what we have to set up in terms of the American Rescue Plan Act. But, because they're going to want to be very specific in making sure Because they're going to want to be very specific in making sure that the funding that's provided by the city through this grant is directed toward individuals that were disproportionately impacted as a result of the pandemic or live in a qualified census tract in Sioux Falls. And so we'll have to work through those details and how we track that and how we reimburse for that.
Okay, so this would address the funding, potentially the funding shortfall a few of our partners have experienced that we that Compass Center, for example, had testified to us. They had some concerns.
That was one of the intents of this, the portion of this funding, recognizing that we may not make the shortfall for everybody who receives that VOKA funding, even in our community, but we have a prior relationship with the Compass Center as a partner with the city. It's something that we want to make sure that they are that they are able to do well here over the next several years as they bridge that gap.
Is, thank you, is potentially Call the Freedom's Marissa's house wrapped in here?
Yes.
Yes?
Yep. We unfortunately cannot fund construction as part of that project, but we can facilitate some assistance for programming during the during that period.
And then maybe my only other question, just a general question, would be, so obviously we can allocate, we can supplement a current budget year, we can amend and adopt next year's budget, but '23 and beyond, I don't think we can bind to future councils. So would we just, we'd have gifting agreements or some sort of partnership, and it would just say contingent upon, like we normally do, contingent upon budgetary funding and future years?
Our thought is we'd probably enter into a three-year subgrant recipient agreement and just make it a multi-year agreement. It's going to have very specific items related to ARPA with compliance and so forth, and it has an end date associated with, because the funding will come to an end for us as well. So there would be a commitment to a certain level of funding within that agreement, subject to appropriation. So they would have to be included in future.
So the usual clause, which is subject to appropriation, so if something happened, there's always?
Right, because you can't bind the future councils.
Okay. Very good. Thanks.
Councillor Erickson, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So I've been here seven years. I'm almost done. And I've never, in my seven years, experienced a collaboration like this. I mean, really, there's a flavor of every single one of us here. You know, oftentimes, we say, you know, some of them may not be as high on my priority list as some of the other ones, but I know they are to maybe my colleagues, or they are to the administration. And so having this collaborative approach has been really exciting. It took a while for us to get here. Leadership facilitated our work sessions. It really includes a piece of every single one of us really with our community in mind. The numerous public-private partnerships that are listed here, so many of the other components have matches to them, not and we didn't even touch on all of the details of that. But when you look at the Dakota Aquarium and the amount of money that they've already raised, and this just gets them to the finish line. And the work that Audrey has done with really preparing all of us in the city with knowing the impact that that specific project does for us is really remarkable. The tennis courts is another one that I find really exciting to be able to bring additional matches here and, you know, just kind of keep coming back tenfold. You've done an incredible amount of fundraising and programming for our facilities as well. I understand that there. Lydia, you've done a ton of work. It was exciting having you here. And I know you have some sponsorships too, coming forward within your own organization with the Walsh family and their foundation. And so that's exciting, all of these things of us really tapping into the public-private partnerships to making these funds go even that much further. And if you were to add in all of those matches, the number would be really mind-blowing, I think, to most people seeing that. And then being responsible, making sure that we're taking care of our water sources and some of the projects that aren't super exciting to take care of, but we owe it to our community to make sure that the Washington Pavilion is is safe and things aren't toppling down. So I really don't have any questions. I'm just really appreciative that we've been able to sit down, discuss. We've all engaged with the public as well through this process. And so I'm excited to bring a project like this forward and really see the impact that we can make for the vast majority of our community and all the work that's done with this. It really took a lot of work for your department, 200 pages. No, thank you, but kudos to you and your department for finding all the ins and outs of the impacts that we can make as a collective group. So thank you. I'm excited to support it and, again, support it next week as well and looking forward to the impact that we can make. So thanks.
Thanks, councillor. Other questions for Sean here? Councillor Kylie, go ahead.
I do not have any questions, but I would like to just put in a brief plug for a couple of the items, if I may, please.
You sure may.
Thank you. Well, first, just to expand on what councillor Erickson already touched on regarding the Dakota Aquarium and Butterfly House, they are a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit, and they do not get any funding from the city of Sioux Falls. They are funded entirely by their admissions, memberships, gift shop sales, and donations that they receive. The community benefits greatly from this facility. They're the it's the state's only interactive ocean education opportunity, immersive education opportunity. Year one projected estimated economic impact is $12.8 million, and I'm going to add that 6.8 million of that is estimated to come from out-of-towners. So we're benefiting greatly from people that are visiting. So that's an illustration of how it attracts individuals to our community. It's accredited through the Association of Zoos and Aquariums and international and national other national partnerships. Workforce attraction plays a big role in workforce attraction and retention because it provides an amenity that that people want in their community. And it goes hand in hand, then, with quality of life, too. It's a one-of-a-kind year-round facility, and it's one of the few year-round facilities that that we have. And the it just gives back to the community in so many ways. Free field trips for 3,000-plus kindergarten through fifth-grade students each year, and Aquarium for All program, a $3 admission for qualifying families, $15 annual membership for qualifying families, and free and reduced admission for community partners, including Life Skate, Dakota Abilities, Children's Inn, Children's Home Society, Avera Cancer Institute, Sanford Cancer Center, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Lutheran Social Services, and more. So they contribute and they give back to this community, too. So I think it's $800,000 on our part, well-invested, and I encourage my colleagues to support the effort. And then moving on to the skate park, this is something that's been talked about for years now. Walter Ports has worked with me and with others in the community. He's unable to be here tonight, but Alex Johnson and Allison Devorek are here, if any of you have questions for any of them. But it's originally was a $1.7 million build estimate, and with the cost escalation of building materials, we expect that to be well over $2 million. So the $800,000 would go a long way in helping them to meet that need. And they have applied and submitted and were accepted to the community, the Chamber Community Appeals Program as well, too. And councillor Alex Jensen is leading much of that effort and could add more. It's just a great public-private relationship opportunity. And I want to go on further that the Sioux Falls Skate Park Association, they are giving back hundreds, thousands of hours in volunteer time to the youth of our community. And many of those youth are kids that are come from low-income families or living in poverty. And this is an activity that absolutely just about any kid can participate because it's low cost to get into it. So I think, again, this is a great investment into the community. And the one thing that I really like about it is if you go out and watch, it's got it's a great illustration of gender equity, too. There's there's boys and girls equally involved. So again, I I think it's a very worthy cause, and I encourage support of that, too. Then lastly, I just want to talk about an opportunity. It doesn't really it doesn't require any action this evening, but an opportunity exists to help the Tennis Association secure a significant donation if we, the city, are willing to put forward some additional dollars, in this case, $200,000, in the 2023 capital program to make further improvements at Tomar Park that complement the tennis facility expansion. So between now and September 14th, I will be talking to each of you individually or in small groups to give you a little bit more more information on this. As I mentioned, it doesn't require any action this evening, but this is an opportunity to really help out the Tennis Association, to put a capstone on their fundraising dollars. And it gives us the ability to leverage the dollars, our dollars and their dollars as well, even even further. So it's another great return on investment, in my opinion. So again, we do have the $200,000 available that we could allocate from within the 2023 capital program for community and regional parks, similar to how we're designating 2023 capital program dollars in that category to the capital improvements for the Arboretum and for the skate park, $300,000 and $800,000 respectively. So again, it's it's a great opportunity, and I'll be talking to each of you more about that between now and the time when between now and September 14th, when this item is amended.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. All right. Any additional questions for Sean while we have him up here? Councillor Selberg, go ahead.
Maybe more of a comment again, too, and some of it's been said, but I mean, it really is terrific. We're talking about the public-private partnerships. We've got the legislative branch of our government and the executive branch of our government working effectively together. And I mean, the result is a win-win for everyone here in Sioux Falls. So as councillor Erickson said, I mean, I haven't really seen anything like it in my five years. I'm not quite the old timer she is, but it's just it is kind of inspiring to be a part of it and just see everybody kind of coming together and working things through. So anyway, I think everybody's done a terrific job, and I just kind of appreciate all the different things that have come together. So nice work.
All right. Thanks, councillor. All right. Any other questions for Sean, or we can get a motion on the floor?
Move and approve.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Councillor Sale, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to take a minute and thank all the people that would just put this together from the public with all the things that we can help as a city accomplish. A lot of you, we're trying to get you over the hump to put that final brick in your foundation to do that. So we've listened to you. This process has taken a very long time. I'd like to specifically call out Sean Pritchard and his finance team for going through all the federal regulations, starting with the CARES Act to ARPA, very confusing, and he's made it easy for a councillor like me to understand, and that takes a lot. Also, Jim David and Dave Bixler from the council staff have worked diligently on all of these projects, too, too. The mayor and his office have worked very well to get this done. This is a big thing, 60-some million dollars that we're appropriating now, most of it federal money, but some of it money that we were able to save because we were prudent last year during COVID. So it's very it's a very big deal. And to the seven other councillors that I've had to work with throughout this, thank you very much. We worked very hard to put this in a package that is palatable to everybody and can take care of a lot of the citizens. So thank you all that worked very, very hard on this. I hope you support it. I hope you support it again next week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, councillor. All right, we do have a motion seconded. Any other discussion here? All right, let's take a vote then, please.
Councillor Member Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 15 is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations for River Greenway improvements, $7 million. Recommendation is set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 17, 2021. Sponsor, Mayor.
Didn't we just have you? Another one?
I was just going to say.
Let's do it.
Separate item, just for purposes of the grant application.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? All right, councillor, any questions for Sean here? All right, look for a motion, that'd be to set a date of second reading for August 17.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Sale and seconded by Jensen on that. Any discussion on the motion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councillor Member Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 16, a resolution vacating a portion of North Powderhouse Road right-of-way lying adjacent to below said properties as shown on Exhibit A.
Hey, Andy.
Andy Berg, Public Works. This is a resolution vacating Powderhouse Road, a section of the right-of-way that, as you can see, is very close to Veterans Parkway. It is too close to continue that access to Madison Street to the south. The development layout has that road now taking a 90-degree bend and going to the west and where it can come down to Madison Street at an acceptable distance from the Veterans Parkway under our access management. So this is a vacation of that right-of-way. There are no public utilities in that segment, and there is no impact to the private utilities easements in that area.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this topic here tonight? Councillor, any questions for Mr. Berg here? All right, I'd look for a motion to approve item 16.
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
Okay, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen to approve this. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councillor Member Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
That one passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 17 is a resolution approving the special assessment role for tree trimming in various areas in the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Sponsor, Mayor.
Good evening, Kelby.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Kelby Maris with Parks and Recreation. This resolution or these assessments are for unpaid invoices as a result of code enforcement efforts to ensure that trees are trimmed to ordinance heights and also for the removal of dead private trees.
Thank you, Kelby. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Councillor, got any questions for Kelby here?
Move and approve. Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Any discussion there? All right, let's. I think you're here to speak on the next one, sir. Weeds?
Yeah.
Next one. You bet. We'll get. No problem, sir. I know you're here, and we'll get you up here. So, all right, we'll then take a vote on this, please.
Councillor Member Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 18 is a resolution approving the special assessment role for repair or demolition of real property in various areas in the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Sponsor, Mayor.
Good evening, Councilman Matt Tobias, Planning and Development Services. Just like Kelby said, this is an assessment for for work that would be being done. These are three items for a total of $2,852.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Sir, I'll call you up. Yours is yours is three away yet, so I won't I won't miss you. All right, anyone from the public who wants to speak to item 18? All right, councillor, any questions for Matt here? All right, look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second, Erickson.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson to approve 18. Any discussion on that? All right, we'll vote on it, please.
Councillor Member Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
That one passes eight to zero. Move to item 19, please.
A resolution approving the special assessment role for snow removal in various areas in[1770.03] A resolution approving the special assessment role for snow removal in various areas in the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Sponsor, Mayor.
Once again, Matt Tobias, Planning and Development Services. There are 16 properties with a total of $2,262.59 for snow.
All right, thank you, Matt. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counsel, you got any questions for Matt here?
Move approval. Erickson.
Second.
All right, motion, motion by Erickson, seconded by Selberg to approve 19. Any discussion on that one? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 20.
A resolution approving the special assessment role for litter removal in various areas in the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Sponsor, Mayor.
Okay, item 20 is for litter removal. This can be for a 24-hour litter notice, a letter that will send to you to pick up garbage that's outside of your property. The last two, I just want to make a note of the last two larger ones, those are litter cleanups that we actually have court orders for to allow us to go in and clean those properties up. So Dominic Miller's here from the Health Department, if you have any specific questions.
Got it. All right, thanks, Matt. Anyone from the public here to speak on that one? All right, Counsel, you got any questions for Matt here?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
All right, motion, Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve item 20. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Item 21.
A resolution approving the special assessment role for the mowing of weeds and grasses in various areas in the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Sponsor, Mayor.
Okay, this one is for the weed mowing. There's 132 properties on this list for a total of $10,731.
All right, thank you, Matt. I know you're here to speak to this, young man. We'll give you the handheld and you can speak to this item. You'll have five minutes to speak to this, so go ahead.
Hey, I feel kinda odd doing this. I own a piece of property at 3312 North Eighth Avenue.
So what's your name, sir?
My name's Roger Thielson.
All right, Roger.
H-I-E-L-S-N.
Thank you.
For the past two years, I've had a contract with Carlin Landscaping, who have kept it mowed, and there's been no problem as far as I know with the city on that. This year, the city took it upon themselves to mow in June, and the fact is, is that I'm positive that, I looked up the ordinance under 324, whatever it was, 342, that, that grass was not over eight inches tall. And on top of that, the man, the man that does the mowing for Carlin, the guy that runs that portion of it, him and I are on a good-term basis, and when agreement was due to the drought, he would drive by every week to check the grass and keep it below the eight-inch mark. The ordinance says over eight inches. City mowed it. They violated by not sending me notice that they were gonna do anything with it so I could contact them and work it out with them. And they also have taken away work from a contractor who has, I have a contract with to do this, and the grass was not eight inches tall. And the city, I want the city to prove personally positive that that was, that grass was over eight inches. And I don't mean just eyeballing. They better have proof, because I have, I can go back for two years and get council checks showing that this service has been taking place. And I am very, very unhappy to be treated this way by the, whatever services of the city. Guess I pretty much covered it.
Okay. Thanks, Roger. Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, questions for Matt on this? Counselor Knightzer, go ahead.
So it looks like this must be ID number 32124 and the amount of $103.50.
Yep, number 86.
Can, can, do you have pictures, whatever you can go through for us?
Yep. So we, I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Thielson before the meeting. The letter was sent out, we, my office sent a letter on May 20th. The property was mowed on June 9th. That is a picture of the property, the day, the contractor photo before they mowed. If you notice along the back fence line, that's grass along the back fence line, that's tall, and you can see that the rest of the yard, there's plenty of sections that are over, that are over eight inches, so. Mr. Thielson and I will, I'm gonna work on the deal where we can get his property registered with the city. This is an extra house that he owns, it's kind of a rental, and we're hopefully that we can be on better, better pages here. But this is, this was clearly a violation when we unmowed it.
Go ahead, Counselor Knightzer.
So he is not on the rental registry, this property?
No.
So where did the letter get sent to?
To his main address, his home address.
Okay.
Where he lives, not here, where he lives.
Okay, so he may have received the letter?
Mm-hmm. He got, the letter was sent out to him at his home address.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, other questions for Matt on this one? All right, Counselor Kylie, did you, okay. All right, look for a motion then.
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Any discussion here, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Yes, I would move to amend by striking item number 86.
All right. Counselor Starr is gonna make an amendment to strike item 86. Do I got a second for that?
I'm gonna second that for discussion. I wanna.
All right, that's, we have a second. Counselor Starr, do you wanna speak to that one?
Yeah, I'll do quick. Can you pull the picture back up? I'm usually pretty tough about these, but what I see in this picture is someone who was trying to make a good faith effort of keeping it mowed. He had a contractor to do it. Did he get the letter? Maybe, maybe not. And the bottom line is, is I don't think he's on our list of problem people that we really are trying to enforce. I think he wants to be a good citizen. He tried to put everything in place and, you know, he's petitioning his government, so I wanna take a shot at us picking up the tab as the city.
All I can tell you is that the complaint came in, an anonymous complaint. This is not something that we noticed. We didn't have an inspector drive by and look at it. A complaint came in, we had staff go out and look at it. Due to the tall grass along the back of the fence and then the tall rest of the yard, that's where we had to put it in violation.
All right, Counselor Knightzer, go ahead.
When was that picture taken?
June 10th.
And when was it mowed?
The same day. That was, this is the picture that was mowed the same day.
And the complaint was called in when?
The complaint was called in on May 20th. And when the, how the letter works is you get, with vegetation, you get the one letter a year, as we know. So you sent the letter out, gave them 14 days to comply, went back and they didn't comply, and that's when the yard was mowed then.
Okay, so I guess, I'm maybe having the same struggle that Counselor Starr is, where, I mean, I look at it and it's hard to tell here from the depth, you know, is this, is it, I mean, is there a chance somebody called it in and the whole thing was tall and they come and they mow it in the interim, but the guy that mowed it just didn't bother, quote-unquote, you know, edging it? And, and that's, and I mean, is the complaint over just the stuff along, and I'm not saying the stuff around the fence and around the trees, that they just did a lousy job of edging?
It's a.
I can't tell how deep that is, I guess, but.
It's a very deep lot.
Uh-huh.
So the stuff in the back of the lot was very, very tall. That's all I mean. And it's one of those things where if you look at the whole entire lot, there, do you have any more pictures from the contractor photo? Or the violation was there and that's why we had it mowed.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
All right, Counselor Selberg, go ahead.
Thank you. So this is his first violation and it's $100? Is that the facts of?
No, so the, the 103 is just for the cost of the, of the mower. We've already waived the $100 citation. There should be a $100 citation associated with this. We've already waived that. So the 103 is for the cost of mowing.
Got it. All right, thank you. Other questions? Any follow-up there, Counselor?
No.
Got your question answered. Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
Well, that just answered one of my questions. So originally it was $203, $100 citation waived, so the cost of 103 is just for us to cover the cost of mowing.
Yep.
And so I, based on that, I think the city has shown some good faith, and I'm going to vote to uphold this. Sir, I would say that your complaint is with your maintenance person.
All right, so we have a motion to strike the item here. Any other discussion on that, Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, just one more. If I could ask the gentleman, Roger, how, how much do you pay your contractor to do it on, if they would have done it?
Well, it's a $25 difference. I pay about, now these are not the taxes, but 78, it's like $75 plus tax, like.
That's good. That's what I.
$78 for mowing.
Yep.
And the city charge is around $100.
Three.
Something. So it's $25 difference, but the full payment is, is even that, in the back, if you read the ordinance, it's over, I don't know if that grass there's fine, I don't know if the reason is we're against the fence, but even on that, there's an exception in your, or since it's a grow, in order to get, see, if you can see that going to see, and I think that my contractor is reseeding that yard by allowing that to grow a little bit. I have an automatic situation where the landscaping service has control of that yard. I have gift certificates because of my capability to do it myself and the people who's in line, I mean, I pay the taxes every year on, that's my responsibility to keep them in touch. So I have, I hire somebody to actually do some of the work and it's just sort of a problem.
Thank you. That answered my question. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion, a second to strike the amendment that's on the floor. Let's go ahead and take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg? Sale?
No.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson? Yes. Jensen?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Knightzer?
No.
All right, that item's gonna fail five to three then, so we're back to the main motion. Any discussion on that, Counselor Knightzer?
Go ahead. I just wanna make, make sure it's just clear that based on the new information that we waived the $100 fine and you would have had to pay to mow anyway, I think the city acted in good faith as best they could, so on that basis, even though I seconded it, I voted no. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counselor, or Selberg, go ahead.
My only thought was I agree with that, too, but he's worked awfully hard to be here and argued it pretty well, so I went along with that part. Anyway, good effort.
All right, we got a motion and a second then to approve item 21. Any further discussion, your counsel? All right, let's vote on this, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. We'll move to item 22.
A resolution supporting the candidacy of Bill O'Toole for position on the Board of Directors of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, SDPAA. Sponsor, Mayor.
All right, I'm gonna pass a gavel to Council Chair Sale to chair this item. I'm gonna speak to it. Director Bill O'Toole was going to speak to this, could be here tonight. His mother actually has passed away this weekend, so I'll ask you to keep Bill and his family in their prayers as they deal with that. The resolution before you is to appoint Director Bill O'Toole for a position, our only position, on the Board of Directors for the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. Bill took over in that capacity when our former risk manager, Michael Hall, had that position and resigned. Bill filled the interim role, the unexpired term, and now this resolution before you would appoint Bill to a full term going forward. So that's what, before you, I'd take any questions you may have on that.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, are there any questions? By your motion.
Second, Kylie.
Moved by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right, thank you, Council Chair Sale. We'll move to item 23 then, please.
Item 23 is a resolution approving the release of part of a 20-foot permanent drainage easement located in Track 3 and Track 5 of Emory Acres in addition to the city of Sioux the city of Sioux Falls, Lincoln County, South Dakota, private applicants, Sayer Associates.
Hey, Andy.
Andy Burgs, Public Works. This is a twenty-foot permanent drainage easement established in two thousand and seven. No public facilities or overland drainage are located within the portion of the easement area that's going to be released. The engineering staff recommends this portion of the easement be released as shown in the image above. The cul-de-sac draining to that area is a private drive.
All right, thanks, Andy. Anyone from the public here to speak to this item tonight? Counsel, got any questions for Andy on this easement?
Move approval. Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve this. Any discussion there? Hearing none, let's vote, please.
Counsel member Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Move on to our next item.
A resolution reappointing an audit committee member to the City Council Audit Committee. Sponsors, Counsel members Sale and Kylie.
Yes, this is just a motion to finalize our appointments to the audit committee.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Is Tony here by chance? Tony's not here? All right, let's be, Tony gets to the audit committee. Any, well, let's get a motion first.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, Kylie and Sale. Any discussion there on that? Counsel Knightzer, go ahead.
I would just throw in that Tony has done a great job in his first term, and I would expect more great knowledge in the second.
Excellent. Any other discussion here on this one?
Just also wanted to include that Tony's one of our three citizen members on the board, and so I greatly appreciate the time he's committed, as well as that of the other two members.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Any other discussion here? All right, let's take a vote on this one, please.
Counsel member Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Counselors, you got any new business to bring up tonight? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move to our public input portion of our agenda. This will last no more than three minutes per person, and it will be for topics that we didn't cover earlier in the agenda tonight, so anyone here for public input can come forward at this time.
I have to say, the way you all handled...
Good evening.
Gentlemen, good evening. It's Osangio. The way you all handled that gentleman just now is so disgraceful. I mean, it's just knocked the wind out of my sails, you know? You're here for the community, you're here for the people. I heard this gentleman pontificate about community and parks and low-cost entry. Maslow hierarchy of motivational needs said if the basic modicum of requirements are not met, you cannot self-actualize. I mean, really? You're gonna charge that man a hundred dollars? And you say you're working for the people? Really? Disgraceful. Three minutes is not adequate for a citizen that is voting on, in this city and state, to have the opportunity to speak, to not have banter, and to resign it to the fact